Good afternoon and welcome to the Cabarrus County Schools Monday, August 4th work session. We're going to call this meeting to order and I'll move on and do introductions to the folks up here on the dais. We have our Teacher of the Year Madison Little, thank you for being here. Board Member Shannon Lancaster, Board Member Catherine Moore, Board Member Sam Tredaway, our Superintendent Dr. Kapicki, myself, Board Chair Rob Walter, our Vice Chair Greg Mills, Board Member Pam Escobar, and Board Member Melanie Freeman. So with, and our SRO if they're seeing their room today, but our SRO is Deputy Craig Carter from Harrisburg Elementary, we appreciate him being here as well. So with that, we will move on to our opening ceremony, which is just the Pledge of Allegiance today. So if you can stand with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We don't have a real long agenda tonight, but we do need a motion and a second to adopt it for our meeting.
Motion that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, second by Ms. Lancaster, any discussion? Okay, let's vote, all in favor of approving our agenda for this evening, please say aye. Aye, anybody opposed? All right, our agenda is set and we'll move right on to Board Chair comments. And I really don't have a whole lot here this evening, we are excited to see everybody back in the building, school buildings, several of our board members went to the welcome for our new teachers last week, that was pretty exciting. But, I mean essentially, we just need to all stay on the same page. That's looking at our mission, what is our mission? Empowering students to build their futures. And what's our vision? Inspiring minds, engaging hearts, and shaping futures. That's what it's all about and that's what we should all as a team be focused on. So with that, I will move it on to Dr. Kapicki for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. And again, we'd like to welcome back everyone to a brand new school here in Cabarrus County. As we prepare to open our doors on Monday, August 11th, I want to take a moment to thank all of you for being a part of our incredible school community. There is nothing quite like the energy and excitement of the first day of school and we cannot wait to see our students back, back in our classrooms, hallways, and on our campuses. Their laughter, their curiosity, and their spirit are what bring our schools to life and we are ready to help them thrive. Each new year brings fresh opportunities to learn, grow, and inspire one another, whether you're stepping into a classroom for the first time or returning as a seasoned educator. I know this year holds exciting possibilities for all of us. We look forward to our RISE convocation tomorrow at Cabarrus County Arena and the opportunity to connect with our more than 3,000 educators across the district. I want to take a moment to also commend and thank our teachers for all the work that they continue to put in to the Cabarrus County School System. As we know, it is a year-round job and they work tirelessly all summer and all year to make sure that they're prepared to open up the school year and give their best. It is truly because of a lot of their dedication and their hard work that the excellence that stems from Cabarrus County is a result of that hard work, so I want to thank them for that. So again, I ask everyone that let's make it a great year together. And with that, I want to share a few important things for parents to know prior to next Monday. First, our open house, our back-to-school open house events for Cabarrus County Schools will be held August 5th through August 7th. For a complete list of dates and times for our schools, please visit our district webpage and check your Parent Square account. Open house is a great way to meet your child's teachers and to begin to establish those one-on-one relationships that are critical for a child's success. We encourage everyone to please attend an open house. Infinite Campus, beginning with the '25-'26 school year, all public schools in the state of North Carolina will transition from Power School to Infinite Campus as our new student information system. Infinite Campus will serve as a primary source for students' grades, schedules, and attendance information. Information on how to connect to your students in the campus account has been shared with families. As with all new transitions, this technology and all the things that go with it, we ask you please to be patient with their staff as they work to make this conversion success. And then Transportation, our Transportation Department has activated student bus information in Edulog Bus App. Please check to make sure your students' information is correct in the app. If not, please contact your school immediately to address any transportation concerns. If you need information on how to access Edulog, please check your Parent Square information, where information on Edulog has been shared. And again, if there are any questions that parents may have in terms of bus transportation for your school and your particular student, I ask you to also contact the school or talk to the principal and get that information to them so that we can make sure we have a smooth transition of our students day one on the school start for all of our transportation or bus routes. And then finally, School Nutrition. Parents may once again manage their students' meals in the account online at linkconnect.com. Parents may deposit funds directly to their child's lunch account, apply for free or reduced meals, or check the school's menu at linkconnect. I would ask all our parents to please be diligent about checking their students' accounts throughout the year so that we can make sure that we stay on top of the balances and the accounts that our students have with each school. And two, if you have any question in terms of getting those free reduced meals, please call the school and ask to speak to the principal. For more back-to-school information, parents may visit our district website and click the Back-to-School Hub button located near the top of the page. Again, we are excited to welcome everyone back and we look forward to a wonderful, outstanding school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kapicki. We'll move on to our next section, which is the Report section. So first is 5.01, which is Committee Reports. Any board members have any updates?
I just want to say welcome back to all the students as well. I'm excited to share that we have over 30 Board of Education interns. They will be getting an update about that this week and we're working on scheduling a welcome session later in August for all of them to learn more about the program. But I must say, it's super impressive to read the recommendations written by so many teachers and principals, not just about how good they are as students with their grades, but who they are as people. I just really appreciate the time and effort that everyone put in to really explain how amazing these students are. I mean, we have musicians, we have athletes, we have academics, I mean, you name it, these kids have done it. They're a very impressive group and I'm very excited about the new school year. I think it's going to be a fun semester.
I appreciate your efforts with that committee and that group, making sure it's a worthwhile opportunity for these students. Anybody else? Okay, I did have our Chair, Vice Chair, meeting with the other districts around the area. It was the focus on legislative issues. We did get an opportunity to share our legislative agenda and they had, I think, two representatives from the House and one from the Senate that were at this meeting and it was interesting just to hear their perspective on things like school calendar and budget. A lot of inconsistencies though, and they'd say, hey, we all support local control of your calendar, yet that's not what they're doing up there as well. But anyway, that was, we tried to do that quarterly, so I don't have the next meeting set yet, but when I do, I'll share that with the board members. Anything else? All right, we will move on to 5.02 and we have our Teacher of the Year representative, Madison Little, and she's got actually a presentation for us.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for taking time out of the meeting so that I could give a report. One of my main goals as Teacher of the Year this school year is to make sure that I'm highlighting all of the amazing things that are happening in our district and we have a lot of them. So I wanted to start with new employee orientation. I had the privilege of being there last week, some of the days, and it was a great experience, but I also just wanted to shout out and thank our HR department, specifically Ms. McLean, because she worked really hard to make it a success and she did a phenomenal job. So I did just want to kind of give an overview of the things that occurred. So we do know that this happened last week. We had employees from the elementary level, secondary level, and experienced teachers come on the final day. And basically, the goals were to just introduce our district vision, but also build that solid community and professional connections, which we know are so important to being successful as you move forward as a beginning teacher and even an experienced teacher, those who are new to our district, they need to know what supports that they have in place. So that was the overview. They had sessions like Educational Inspiration, Crucial Conversations, Things on NISIS, Tips for Success, EC and 504 Accommodations, and Parent Square. I was able to present to a group of EC teachers, which was really awesome, just to see how excited they were. And also knowing that we're getting more EC teachers is always great, so that was really refreshing for me and getting to be able to build those relationships with them, even though they're not at my school, just knowing that I'm in their corner if they ever need anything. This is our Beginning Teacher of the Year. She was able to start the day off on the first day with Ms. McLean, which was really great and I heard phenomenal things about that. And then we also had sessions on instructional support, so morphology routines, content area, onboarding, EC 101, developing and annotating PBOs, program choice things such as IB, STEM, DLI, and then academic conversations and comprehension strategies. So these are some pictures that were taken throughout those couple of days. And then I just wanted to let everybody know that the feedback that I got from the teachers who were there that I was able to talk to, they said that it was a really good couple of days. They were able to find people and like-minded people in their support system that they had and that they felt engaged and supported, which I think is really important. And I know that that is something that we discussed a lot at the last board meeting and so being able to take all of that and see it come to light was really awesome. And they were just really grateful for the experience to have that before they entered their schools on Friday for the first time. And I was very thankful to also be able to do the closing keynote for the first day and share a little bit of my story and what motivates me to be in the classroom every single day as well as be a leader for those around me. So I am very thankful for that opportunity and just knowing that we did build that strong start, giving them a supportive hand and a shared purpose, which I think those are three crucial things that teachers need in order to make sure that they are successful. So knowing that we planted all three of those things before we move into the school year is a really great feeling. So just thank you for being able to have new employee orientation. And then tomorrow is RISE, where we all get to be together, which is one of my favorite days ever. And I'm coming back to get the Spirit Trophy back, so yay! Thank you!
We can see your spirit already. Any questions for Ms. Little? Anybody have any questions for, I think that was probably the best update we've ever had on the new teacher orientation.
Expect more.
Awesome. All right, so our last report will be our construction update from Mr. Brian Cohen. So welcome him to the podium. Good afternoon.
I'm not going to be nearly that energetic, so I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone. This is the update for construction of the last couple of months since I last saw you. We'll jump right into it with the Culture and Web Beverly Hills replacement project. So right now, our concrete masonry units, or we refer to them as CMUs, continue going vertical in the kitchen and serving line areas. You can see footing excavation continues around the classroom wings. Those are our priority because of the sequence of the scope of work. Our main fire protection system waterline that loops the entire site is being installed in the areas that can be accessed now by the contractor. Curb and gutter installation continues to be installed in the staff and visitor parent lot as well as the car rider line. The plumbing and electrical contractors continue to install the underslab work that's under the classroom wing areas ahead of the slabs on grade being poured. This past week, we actually did get our classroom wing C slab poured. Rogers has held a Kona Ice Event for the community and the neighbors, which was very well received. We had probably 30 to 40 people attend that event. They did it 3:00 to 6:00 one afternoon during the blistering heat that we had several weeks back. We had kids riding up on their bikes, we had parents, we had just adult neighbors come and visit, gave them an opportunity to engage with Rogers, ask questions, see the progress, you know, address any concerns that they may have. So it was very well received. You know, Rogers does a great job at being a community partner, you know, embedded in these neighbors where we're working, so. And then both the CMU firewalls have been topped out for the classroom wings. That's a milestone because those are the largest CMU walls we have on these sites and they have to go in first because once they go up, everything builds off of these walls. These are just some images of the footing and foundation work that's taking place in the administration area as well as the ECR area. And you can see one of those firewalls there in the background. Lot of concrete, lot of reinforcing steel part of these projects, for sure. It gives you an updated aerial image showing that staff, visitor, parent parking lot area as well as the car rider line looping there down along Spring Street. The area of the building that you're looking at is creating the gym space as well as the dining area and the administration, R and EC areas in the front. Then you can see those two large firewalls that are up and topped out there in the middle that start the classroom wings. There's a little bit closer image of that area and the work taking place on preparations for that slab on grade pour in the C wing in the upper part of that image. This is from vantage, looking over Georgia Street back towards the backside of the school. Those are the two classroom wings, you can see they're being constructed, coming off those firewalls. Then the area down in the bottom of that image, those are our playground spaces, basketball court, the multipurpose field area. All those areas right now are being utilized for staging of materials on site because we're so tight on available space around here. There's a little bit closer aerial image of the parent, staff, visitor lot and that car rider line. That's the same area looking back towards Grove Avenue, that main entrance coming off of Grove and Yorktown there for all the parent visitors and staff as well. And that is all I have on Culture and Web Beverly Hills. Are there any questions?
Questions, board members? All right, thank you, Brian.
We'll move on to Mary Frances Wall real quick. So the pre-engineered metal building was delivered last week. The construction of that building will start going vertical this week. Curb and gutter on this site's about 75% complete as well and they've made the connection out onto Palisade Drive. That's a critical part of that curb and gutter work because obviously subcontractors and material deliveries are accessing this site and we need to get that completed. The contractor did complete the main waterline tap out along Palisade Drive, which we did have to do some traffic control and close one lane off, but that is completed and done and patched back. And all the slabs on grade for this project have been poured and are completed now. The main parking lot stone's been installed as well and will be used by the subcontractors and materials deliveries for use throughout the remainder of the project. And we continue to track a May 26 completion for this project as well. That's an updated image last week of when we were pouring that final slab on grade. There's that staff and visitor parking lot area with the stone being set up and you can see the main entrance there to your left coming directly opposite Warren Street. And then there it is completed and how it's going to be utilized by the subcontractors and contractor for the remainder of the project. Just one more updated image of that slab on grade being finalized and the metal building there staged in the upper part of that image. The CMU work continues in between that connector area between the 1995 portion and the new construction. That work's taking place while the other slabs are being finalized. This work is what creates the warming kitchen, the custodial storage and office area, our data closet, our main electrical room, our fire alarm control room. All those rooms have to be rated rooms, so that's why we build them out of CMUs. And I believe that is all I had for Mary Frances Wall. Are there any questions?
You want to define that acronym again?
Concrete Masonry Unit, blockwork.
Any questions on this one? Are they done with the overnight work?
They are, yes, sir. Yeah.
So the rest of it's during daytime?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to the Opportunity School real quick. All these projects are following similar tracks now. So footing and foundation work continues around this site. The masonry contractor is installing the foundations around the warming kitchen and multipurpose gym area. Again, plumbing and electrical contractors continue to rough in underslab work throughout the site. The pre-engineered metal building for this project also was delivered last week. One of our milestones that we tried to hit before school start back is the data conduits, the waterline, the fire protection connections. All of these are being served off of lines that currently are utilized by the PLC. We did this in an effort to not, one, have to run new utility infrastructure into this building and to save a little cost on what it takes to serve the new Opportunity School. The site contractor has cleaned up our big borrow pit area in the back of the site where we excavated good soil and we wasted all of our bad soils in. So he's cleaned that up and it'll be utilized now for laydown area for the contractors. We've also are in the process of recreating the dumpster enclosure that was utilized by the PLC that had to be relocated because of this project and will be done before the start of school next week. And the slabs on this project are being placed in two different pores, with one of those pores taking place last week. And unfortunately, the next one's scheduled for tomorrow morning, so we'll see how that goes. That gives you a little bit of updated image there showing the dining area, the warming kitchen, that larger space is the multipurpose gym area that we're creating for them. And this is the only portion of this project that has any CMU foundation work taking place. That gives you a view of the tie beams, the reinforcing tie beams that go from column to column and then the network of conduits that have to pass through that beam and some of the challenges that these guys face in getting that underground rough-in completed. Then there's the rough-in for the underslab plumbing work taking place in the warming kitchen and group toilet space. That's an updated aerial image, kind of shows the foundation outline of the building. That one slab on the right was what we got poured last week. And the area in the top part of that image is the spoils area where we had the borrow pit and it's been seeded and strawled and stabilized now and will be utilized for laydown and storage throughout the remainder of this project. That just gives you a little bit better vantage of where this campus will sit in relationship to the PLC. That's Winkler over on your left. You can see Highway 29 up there on the right and then that's Eli Lilly up there in the upper part of that image. Any questions on Opportunity School?
Pam.
Is this also May 26?
This is June right now.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're tracking middle of June, I believe, is completion on this one. Just a quick update on the Fuel Farm project for transportation. This gives you an aerial outline of the new improvements being made in relationship to what is in place and the existing structures. You can see down on the left-hand side, the three new 20,000-gallon diesel tanks that will be installed as a part of this project. Right now, the SPAC Co. is scheduled to start demolition on August the 25th of this year, of this month, and completion with our owner training being October the 15th. So we'll start seeing some activity taking place over the next few weeks on this site as well.
Have we made contact with the neighbors on this?
I'll check with Mr. Hurlacher and see if he's reached out to them yet and let you know, okay?
Thank you. Anybody else? Was that the last one?
That is the last one.
Appreciate the update.
Yep, any questions from anybody else?
All right, quiet groups.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks again for giving us the update. All right, we will move on to our next section, which is Items for Consent or Action. These are items that we can either, if we're all on the same page, add to consent. If we want more information or want to vote on any of that, just we would put that on action. So our first one is 6.01, which is Policies for First Read, and we have Dr. Sandy Ward at the podium. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, Dr. Kapicki, Ms. Little. We do have three new policies up for First Read here in August. These policies kind of follow and track from last month. We're looking at a packet of policies that deal with Title IX and our bullying issues of the policies that address that. And so most of the policies that we're going to be bringing up for the next few months will just be dealing with adding in references to Title IX or cross-references. So I'll go ahead and get started. The first policy I'll address is 1700, Governing Principle, Removal of Barriers. And this one just kind of seeks to eliminate anything that would get in the way of students and staff and how they experience school. So that's going to be Governing Principle. There you go. And so as I said before, this adds in Title IX references to this specific table of contents. So it just kind of adds that in as a protection. Any questions?
Board members, opportunity for questions?
All right, so the next policy we'll look at, we're looking at 7335 Employee Use of Social Media and Electronic Communications. This one was not in the packet, but we came across this one as we were looking at a different policy and what we wanted to do here was to update Twitter to the new name, which is X. So we figured we might as well do it while we were kind of cleaning up some policies.
So that's the only change?
And the third is a required policy change, Personnel Files. And again, this one updates references to Title IX policies and bullying policies in Section B and in our cross-references. So we're adding in those policies. Any questions there?
Questions on that one? Okay, are we all good with this for consent or does somebody want it on action? Consent? Consent this side? All right, they'll be moved to consent next week. Thank you and don't go anywhere because you're on the next one as well. So 6.02 is Policies and Approval for Second Reading. Now these are the ones that'll go into effect next week.
So looking at Policies for Second Reading, last month, Mr. Palmer introduced 1300, Governing Principle, Parental Involvement, once again, updating references to Title IX and our bullying processes. So kind of cleaning up, you can see adding in those policies, but also just kind of cleaning up. One of them was archived, retitled, and things of that nature. So we really want to clean it up as we go because some of these haven't been revisited a long time. Makes sense? Okay. The next one, same thing, updating references to Title IX. This is Governing Principle 1500, Safe, Orderly, and Inviting Environment, adding in our Title IX policies there and also doing some cleanup on policies that are no longer in existence. Next is 1600, Governing Principle on Professional Development. Once again, updating references to include Title IX and our bullying processes. Now this one also does have, some of the policies were renamed and so we just wanted to make sure that we clean those up to make sure that all the policies are referenced accurately. And last but not least, Policy 17607280, Prohibition Against Retaliation. This one updated the cross-reference, so not the actual legal reference, but the cross-reference to our bullying policy.
Okay, so no substantive changes to any of these. Board members, are we good with adding these to consent? It looks like I'm getting a bit of a shaking head, so that'll be also added to consent. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Oops, we do have a question.
Dr. Ward, since we're starting out the new school year, if parents want to look up a policy, is it easy to find on the website?
Great question. So once we go, when you go to the CCS website and you go to Board of Education Policy Manuals, what you can do there is you can either type in something that you're interested in, say something like field trips, recess, or things, you know, grading. Once you type that in, the policies will pop up. And so as we revise and edit our policy manual, there's also a section down below where it says Revision History. So it'll tell you when we looked at certain policies. So for those who are watching, if you want to go to Cabarrus County Schools, you're going to go to Board of Ed, you're going to go to the policy manual. You can either type in or look down the side for like a table of contents.
And there's also a link on the Board Docs, our agenda site.
Yep, alternate link there. Great question, thank you for that.
All right, thank you again. Moving on to 6.03, Concord High School Electrical Switchgear Renovation. Do we have Mr. Chuck Taylor here to tell us all about this? Welcome.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Kapicki, as always, happy to see you again. Tonight, I'm asking you to approve the bid for the electrical switchgear. It came in at $295,000. We had projected $450,000 for this, so it's a very favorable bid, very happy to see that. Watson is an excellent company. Do I have any questions?
Board members, questions on this one?
Did I read it correctly? This was the only bid we had?
Yes, ma'am. We bid it the first time. We had actually, I believe we invited four bidders, no less than three. The second time, we invited the bidders back, unfortunately, we only had Watson that wanted to bid this project. It's a very complex project in and It's a very complex project in an existing building, can be very tough, and the timelines are a little bit tight.
So are these, how do you advertise a bid? Like, if there's a person that might be watching now that would maybe have a company that wants to bid, what's the process for that?
So that's regulated by the state, and we make sure we follow all of the state statutes. We personally utilize the Charlotte Post. We put a posting in there, and then we also advertise it online on our website, as well as we reach out to qualified vendors that we would like to bid it.
Board members, other questions? So this is a replacing unit that is how old, or how, when was the last one?
Original to Concord High School.
So you get that much of a life, over 50 years of it?
Yes, sir. And you're not only getting a replacement for the existing equipment, we have also engineered into additional capacity for that school. That school is very challenged for electrical circuits, much like this building.
All right, so do we have enough information? Are we good with this one? Okay, it looks like we're all good for consent. Thank you. And I guess moving on to our last one, which is 6.04, Capital Budget Alternative Proposal. We've got Mr. Jonathan Bowers joining you, Mr. Taylor, to go over this, this request.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kapicki. First of all, I want to say that the next proposal you're going to see is the brainchild of Mr. Taylor. This is really a byproduct of some of the creative thinking and some of the creative problem solving that he and his team do each and every day. What we are here to do, we're here to seek your approval for a proposal that we have for some flexibility for funding that we would like as it pertains to monies that were allocated from the county to deal with some of our facilities projects for the upcoming school year itself. We've prepared the overview for you here just to be able to give a sense on the direction which we'll head tonight. One of the things we'll do is we'll refresh your memories a little bit and review what are some of the funding sources that we receive from the county when it comes to capital projects themselves and the various categories that exist. Mr. Taylor then reviews some of the projects that were associated with our Top 36 list this year that we submit to the county annually, and then also review for you what our capital out, or capital improvement plan requests were as well. And then ultimately, he's going to walk you through what a proposed use of that funds would be. Do want to mention, we are here to seek your approval first because obviously, anything that would have to do with the flexibility of the funding and how it is allocated and use of it, which would necessarily be handled at the county level, but we certainly would not feel comfortable approaching them without bringing you up to speed and certainly seeking your approval first. So a little backstory here. When it comes to actually funding some of our facilities-related projects, there are three major sources of funding that we receive each and every year or requests that we make to the county, one of which is going to fall within the $25,000 and below category. Those are projects that we usually call our $25,000 projects. And the county provides us annually and historically has about $900,000 in each budget cycle to be able to address these lower-cost minor repairs. These are your everyday things that happen within a school building that would certainly warrant attention that we want to get out in front of to keep little problems from turning into bigger problems. The second funding stream that we have is what we refer to as our 25 to 499 list. Those items are most commonly referred to as the Top 36. And again, as the pricing would indicate, those are projects that fall between $25,000 to just shy of $500,000 in terms of their estimated cost and actual cost. Again, now, the amount in which we receive from the county will vary each and every year, so it does fluctuate somewhat based on the list that we present and certainly based on the resources and the amount of funding available from the county itself. It is important to note that this year, the county did fund all Top 36 requests that we had asked of them for a total of $10.1 million. That's an approximate amount. And the last funding category we have are those items that we call those capital improvement projects. So think big-ticket items, think system replacements at the school level. Those are projects that come in north of $500,000 that obviously involve a significant and a substantial amount of resources to be able to support. Again, each and every year, those items will vary when it comes to funding from the county depending upon their resources and availability of funds at that level as well. But that last category falls into those things that are really heavy-ticket items, your roofs, your HVACs, your parking lot replacements. So things that we would certainly incur that would take sometimes a longer life, or excuse me, timeline to complete, but are significant projects. So Mr. Taylor's going to talk about some more specifics on each of these projects and offer some examples as to what would constitute each type of category.
All right, so just to give you some examples, the less than 25 category and give you a little history on that, that was a category that Cabarrus County Schools, as well as the Cabarrus County admin teams worked together to try to figure out how we were going to fund all this deferred maintenance, and that's how we developed these three systems. The question was, what's a work order versus what's a project? So we defined that anything that's $5,000 or less would be affected by the operational budget. The $25,000 or $5,000 to $25,000 projects would have a funding source and revenue. So that's where that came from. The 25 to 499 was their first attempt to really come after and get the deferred maintenance going. You have to forgive me, I've been working on this for a long time, so it's, it's very passionate for me. So happy to see that. And the Top 36 is very important. However, at a certain point, we split off to that CIP or greater than 500K. It created a separate list because they needed it a different way. When you're financing a project, you don't want to finance a project that's not going to last as long as the financing, right? So these are the really large projects that you want to go after that big financing for on the CIP list. So this is the first 18 items of the Top 36. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review those. Let you look over it for a second. This is the second half of the Top 36. Look over it for a second. There you go. This is the top items of the capital improvement plan that we presented to the county last year. Now, it's important for me to show you this so that you'll understand what I'm about to present to you. This is a hybrid list that my team and I created in order to try to maximize the funding the county has allotted. We are not, and this is the important thing, we are not asking for additional funds. We just want to change how we're spending it. It's not that the, the items that are being displaced from the Top 36 are not important, they're very important. They will rise to the top of the list on Top 36 next year, but because we're not receiving any capital, it's very important. I talk to you about resources all the time. So we have three resources, time, money, and people. We never have enough, so we had to maximize everything. And if you look, we'll keep our three roofs from the capital list just as it was presented. So we're not asking for anything that wasn't already asked for. We're going to do two of the HVAC systems and when it says that we're replacing the chiller plants, in your mind, think of it as we're replacing the heart and the brains of the system, okay? You can live without an extremity, but you can't live without your heart and your brain. It also allows us to upgrade R22, which we have a lot of R22 systems. That hasn't been allowed to be manufactured in this country since 2020. Every year, the cost of that R22 goes up. Last year, I spent about $43,000 purchasing R22 for our systems. It's going to go up again this year. So as soon as we can replace those, we start feeling some relief from the burden of the cost of those systems. There's also two parking lots on here that need major repairs. If you've been in either one of those parking lots, I don't even have to say anything, you know. And as well as a track replacement. We have to continue replacing tracks. I, I did get a few questions about the, the track systems themselves. Tracks mostly are asphalt. Asphalt requires stress on it. It requires workload on it. Tracks do not receive those. Within seven to 10 years of building one, you're going to start to see failures in it. All you have to do is ride out to look at this track, and you will see what I'm talking Thanks. So I've kind of covered most of the things in this slide. The three roof replacements are at Pitt School Road, Hickory Ridge Middle, Carlay Fur. The HVAC replacements are at Rocky River and Wykoff Elementary. The two additional parking lots are Concord High School, Central High, Central Cabarrus High, so you know, I don't even have to tell you about those. Let's don't do it. And then Cox Mill High's track. I personally been out there and walked it. It needs to be replaced. Okay. We have a couple of links so that you can find those lists if you want to go to them later.
So the appendix there does provide, again, the backstory and the resources that support this in terms of the request and the ask and the list and the priorities. The other thing I think Mr. Taylor's proposal really helps us better understand is this allows for the best of both worlds, if you will. It allows us to be able to create a priority list of those capital items to which we did not receive funding for, but yet also integrate that within our Top 36 funding and still maintain some of our Top 36 efforts. So essentially, it would be eight capital projects, and then nine of the Top 36, we would still be able to advance forward. It's also noteworthy to say that for every roof we're able to replace, it does say some of the systems located beneath the roof. Water intrusion and integrity and breakdown degradation within the roof puts other systems at failure of risk as well. So it does a little bit to get a biggest bang for the buck, if you will, with the proposal. So with that, I will pause, and certainly we will entertain any questions you might have.
Board members, Sam?
The, the parking lot at Central, which is atrocious, I mean, is it going to be basically the same footprint as it is now? Or is it going to be, or is there going to be any redesign of the, of the parking lot?
Are you referring, sir, to when the school is replaced? Or right now?
Now.
No, sir. It wouldn't change. What we're going to do is-
The traffic flow and everything would be the same.
Yeah, sir.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Because that lot, as you know, has been added on and added on, the parking lot.
Yes, sir.
It's very interesting.
It is interesting.
Okay, Pam?
If, if this is, and I recognize, thank you for asking us first, but if the county commission is on board, and we don't know yet, have we discussed, has staff talked to staff? Do we have any indication that they're aware?
So we have not spoken to them yet. We wanted to make sure we had approval.
So we're coming to the board to get initial approval from the board, but myself and Phil Penn have spoken to the county. Well, I can't speak to that they will, I can't say what they're going to do in a meeting. It is, it is our understanding that the initial proposal of this was, was warmly received. And Mr. Penn, if you'd like to speak to that, please do.
Yeah, I just took along those lines. There's a joint meeting coming up on the finance teams between the two respective sides. This will be discussed in a little bit more detail. And again, we were a little bit reluctant to get too far out in front of the cart before this board had an opportunity to review it first, right? And we never want to be that far out in front of your own board with the potential for this, but you know, recognizing that it's dollar for dollar exactly what they were planning to spend in the first place, we haven't perceived any resistance on this at this point.
And then if, thank you. And if it does get approved, and I know I'm ahead of myself, but when would you do the work on a parking lot at a school?
So that would be mostly during the summer.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be immediately, but any breaks where we had opportunities, take advantage to get any of the work done, we would certainly work it in through the year.
And I appreciate the Cox Mill High School track. It is not good, and I would argue maybe not safe. So, because there's cracks. I mean, you can't run on a surface that's-
Yes, ma'am.
You're going to trip and fall. So is it out of commission while we wait to do it, or is there, is there patching? Or how do you wait?
There, there are some temporary fixes. I don't know how much of that would actually affect. We'll have to evaluate that. If we get this approved, I think we can move pretty quickly on this.
Okay, thank you.
When is the track season?
Spring.
In the spring. Other questions?
When, excuse me, thank you. When you proposed this and you proposed it in the different buckets, they did not approve any capital money, correct?
No, no, ma'am. In the 500-plus or the CIP capital improvement plan, they did not approve any of those for this year.
So there was no discussion at that time to, they could have partly funded the Top 36, and they could have given us some CIP money, correct? They, they, I mean, has that ever been done?
So, and I think your question is a good one. I think these are the opportunities for us moving forward to say, how can we continue to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollar? And also look at creative opportunities that exist that might be a little bit more fluid and flexible to be able to fit our dynamic needs. I certainly don't want to speak for Mr. Penn, because I think he would spearhead any conversations about funding changes of that magnitude, but I believe that this obviously is sort of a, a springboard potentially into looking at this, but I'll defer to Mr. Penn for that.
And I think the important context to have around that is how the county funds these projects, right? CIP and school construction are typically debt-funded projects. So for off-cycle on the debt issuance, as we might be for all the things we went through with LGC recently, it's very possible that we're willing to take these forwards as CIP, knowing that we need to get to a, a debt issuance before we're able to consider some of those projects going forward. So all we're really saying is taking what they have in operating capital, it's an oxymoron, I understand that, but using that as a funding source to say, okay, if that, if that $10.1 million that you're willing to spend in this budget cycle, there's better ways we think that'll address the immediate needs that we have in front of us without the necessary step of going to a debt issuance at this point on behalf of the county.
But the issue is they're on there because they are debt-eligible to be funded that way.
Correct.
So you're taking that off, and you're taking things that may not be eligible and using funding towards, towards these-
That's correct.
-dealt eligible items.
Yes, sir.
So we'll be having, again, asked for them again, but they won't be debt. It'll be another 36 list next year.
So it, I think it's important for everyone to understand and note as well, the projects that we're doing, the roofs are complete. The HVACs, that will come off of the cost of the HVAC replacement cost if they fund the complete replacement before or within a reasonable amount of the lifecycle.
So we're doing a partial replacement?
Yes.
And that gives you what? What does that, what is that giving us? Couple of years? Is that?
That could give us 20 years. Brains and heart.
All right, are we comfortable on this? Do you want to hear more about it later next week, or do you want to hear? You're all, you're all good? It was good? All right, well, I had that one to consent as well. So that was the last-
Thank you very much.
That was the last of the open session items. We do have closed session to get an update from our attorneys, so we will need a, a motion and a second to go into closed session. The motion is listed on Board Docs. I mean, I guess I could read it, but it's pretty much the same motion we've had for the last couple of months, so if somebody wants to-
Motion that we move into closed session.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, let's vote all in favor of moving into closed session. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? All right, with that, we'll say goodnight to our viewing audience, and we'll see you again next week. Thank you.